The meeting is called to order at 6:31 PM. Please rise and the clerk will lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, in the physical, with liberty and justice for all.
Can I please have a motion in a second that the board approves the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Board members, questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed?
Emily, you just have to do the main agenda first.
I don't see it.
Agenda before they have consent.
Oh, I see it. I see it, I'm sorry. Thank you. Can I have a motion in a second that the agenda of December 12th, 2023 be approved as submitted?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed. Thank you. Can I please have a motion in a second that the treasurer's report, including the cash report, general fund cash report, the general fund revenue status report, general fund budget status report, school lunch fund cash report, and school lunch fund revenue and expense budget report for the month ending September 30th, 2023 be approved?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Okay, special reports?
We have one very special report. It is our annual Medicaid compliance plan recertification. So we have our world famous Marty Morrow here, and your slides are all set up, and the clicker should work for you?
I struggle with these. So do I need to push this?
I think you're great. Nope, it's on.
Perfect.
And then, do you have a clicker?
Yes, I do.
Just make sure.
Okay, so there you go. Thank you for inviting me here tonight. I'm Marty Morrow, the Medicaid coordinator for Penfield, and I'm just going to give you a refresher on Medicaid in Penfield. SSHSP is the School Supportive Health Services Program, otherwise known as Medicaid in Education. So this is the New York State program that enables our district to access federal monies for students who are Medicaid eligible, who are, have medically necessary, medically necessary related services on their IEP. We have a Medicaid compliance committee in Penfield that consists of Scott Dreschler, the Department of Special Ed, Director of Special Ed, Bill Maloney, who is the school business executive, and myself. We review the quarterly, we have quarterly meetings to review alerts from Medicaid, notices that they send out, and changes, updates that they have. We establish best practices and procedures and annually review our compliance plan. The compliance agreement is provided to you to disclose any information regarding waste, fraud, or abuse. So you have the information. If you have any concerns, please reach out. Scott Dreschler is our compliance officer. Or you can reach out to the Office of the Medicaid Inspector General in Albany. The Medicaid billable services are listed in front of you, and these are all really designed to be managed through like doctor's offices, the way the documentation is handled. And so, a lot of it is, a lot of documentation that we don't process in the same way. So, we really bill for the speech, OT, and PT services because that's most efficient in submitting our claims. The first thing we have to obtain is a parental consent for any students who are eligible. Parents give us permission to access their students' public benefits, so we can submit claims for them. It's a one-time consent, and it allows us to be reimbursed for services that are medically Individuals who order, prescribe, refer, or attend services through this program have to be enrolled. It's a five-year term. It's basically to update information about the provider so that the program can reach them or make sure that all their information is up to date. The different provider qualifications, a speech, language pathologist, physical therapist, and occupational therapist, all have to be licensed and certified through New York State with an NPI number. And if they aren't, they could be a teacher of speech, hearing, and handicapped, or a teacher of students with speech and language disabilities under the direction of a speech therapist. And for PT and OT, they could be an assistant for those therapies under the direction of a certified licensed therapist. The National Provider Identifier is a federal database for agencies that are covered by HIPAA, and it is really just a way to keep track of providers nationally, so we can look them up and be sure that we have up-to-date information for those providers and they are, you know, up and up not in any default, basically. There's also a regulation on exclusion. So anytime there's a new provider that's working with our children, we can look them up in a database to see if they have been excluded for fraud, or abuse, or any other issue or concern. And I look those up, and we have another person in HR who looks them up as well. We have partnerships for, like Mary Carriola, who will sign an annual agreement with us, allows us to submit claims for their services, and they have a statement of reassignment, which basically means they won't also bill for the same services, so no one's double These are the requirements for Medicaid claims. Students have to be eligible for Medicaid. We have the one-time parental consent. The qualified prescriber has to have all the enrollments that are needed. They have, the student has to have a service on their IEP. The referral or order has to be from a qualified provider. The service provider has to enter notes within a certain timeframe of the actual date of service, and it has to follow certain guidelines. The sessions have to meet the IEP requirements. There is a CPT code, which is a code that applies to the type of service being provided during that session. And then there's a ICD-10 code, which is a code that applies to their diagnosis, their medical condition. And so, with all that included, we process our claims through Frontline, which has all kinds of audits within their logic, and it helps us not to bill for anything that's not eligible. So then, we have a cost report at the end of the year, and that includes a random moments time study, which is exactly what it says. The state sends out random emails to our providers and asks what they are doing at that moment in time. And the providers have two school days to respond, and it's really just to make sure that we're, you know, identifying people who are actually working in our district when we say that they are. Trying to keep everybody on the straight and narrow. So it's an annual report that consists of a count of all students who are receiving Medicaid-eligible services. It also keeps track of anyone that's on our payroll that is a provider, and their benefits. And it also keeps track of the supplemental list of any agencies that we work with, including BOSEs, so that we can make sure that all of those people that are working with our students all have the proper certifications. And of course, administrative costs. We have a couple documentation audits. One is through BOSEs, and that's usually every couple of years, and the other is through EFP, our group with, internally with our district. Any questions?
Board members, question?
I have a question.
Marty, I'm just curious, when you spoke about the exclusions, like if there was, has there ever been a situation where there was fraud with a family wanting Medicare or Medicaid, but then actually was qualified for? Were, does the state deny that if they once were fraudulent, but then they're actually able to, like they have a need?
Like reinstate?
Yeah, do they reinstate? Better word, thank you.
I'm not aware of that.
Okay, I was just curious if.
Yeah, I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you.
You had mentioned BOSEs, and actually, that was a question I had. So when we have students that are placed in BOSEs or gets BOSEs services, you know, I don't know if those services are billable to Medicaid or if they're coordinating. How does that work when we partner with BOSEs on caring for a student?
What was that last part of the question?
How does that work when we partner with BOSEs?
Yes.
On caring for a student as far as who's billing the Medicaid, who's doing the Medicaid billing, who's coordinating that?
Yeah, so it goes through our, for, for the students that are placed out of district through BOSEs, they, their notes on services that they provide to their students actually filter into our system so that we can submit for those costs. So, again, only if the student is Medicaid eligible. And for any providers that are, BOSEs provided services within district, it's similar, but they, they actually enter their sessions into our system, and we manage those the same way BOSEs would, only, all of that is really billed through us. BOSEs does not bill for that.
Great, thank you.
Because they're state-funded.
Yeah, thank you.
Any other questions?
I just have a comment, and I don't know if it's a question, but your presentation was very clear and concise, and you made it sound pretty simple, step by step. And I know that is not.
Yeah.
What really goes on. So, thank you for going through all of this paperwork and all these steps and processes because we know the state doesn't make it easy to support our children sometimes.
You're welcome.
Are they watching? But, yeah, thank you for your accuracy and your diligence and for making it look easy when we know it's not.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And you're welcome.
Thank you for coming.
Thanks, Marty.
Thanks, Marty.
Have a good night.
You too.
You too, thanks.
That concludes superintendent, or nope, it doesn't, that includes special reports.
Helen, you are up, student reports.
Hello.
Hi.
Hi. In terms of district-wide updates, I'm sure you all know that many Jewish students and staff celebrated the first night of Hanukkah on December 7th at PHS. Today, we had our monthly community building day. So after we competed in a rock-paper-scissors tournament for an icebreaker, we discussed inclusivity and unity. Last night was the junior winter concert, where many groups, including the Philharmonia Orchestra, Concert Band, and Concert Choir performed. Auditions for the spring musical Music Man are in progress, and boys' swimming, girls' basketball, and our bowling team are all having great seasons so far. At Bay Trail, PEN Prince, the school's literary magazine, is accepting submissions for its December contest, and its theme is holiday cheer. On Wednesday, December 20th, Rock Therapy Dogs will be visiting during lunch periods. And next week is Spirit Week, and students and staff are so excited to show their school pride with themed dress-up days, the first being Media Monday. At Scribner, their winter concert is happening tomorrow night. At Cobble's, their winter concert is happening Thursday night. And until the 22nd, they are holding a hat and mitten drive, and students are encouraged to donate new or lightly-used winter hats, gloves, and scarves. At India Landing, the winter concert is happening tonight, I believe maybe in the auditorium. And at Harris Hill, their winter concert is happening Monday night. And every Wednesday in December will be a Harris Hill Pizza Night at Cam's Pizzeria. So if any of you are pizza-inclined, you can mention the Harris Hill fundraiser when you order, and a portion of the proceeds will go to the PTA to support Harris Hill.
Thank you, Helen. Superintendent reports?
Helen, you always do such a nice job. Typically, when you talk, I have an idea of what's happening because I also work here. But you got me with the pizza night, so you have no idea how excited I am for tomorrow night. Big fan. Thank you. I have for superintendent reports, just two. We just, I just have two staff student honors, and then I'll turn it over to Dr. Driffl for our business updates for this evening. For me, the first is our scholar athlete teams, and you'll hear me provide these honors typically a couple times a year after every season. But this one's pretty cool. It's congratulations to every single one of our fall sports teams on being named, I always have to remember this long one, so it's, it's the New York State Public High School Athletic Association Scholar-Athlete Teams. So in order to qualify for this honor, which is across the state, the teams average for 75% of the roster must be 90% or higher. And so, this is all of our fall teams with Boys and Girls Cross Country, Field Hockey, Football, Game Day Cheer, Girls Golf, Gymnastic, Boys and Girls Soccer, Girls Swimming and Diving, Girls Tennis, and Boys and Girls Volleyball. And I, we always talk about it, especially with our athletic director, Mary Beth Walker, the reality is that we are student athletes here. So they're, they're not professional athletes, and they are students first. And so, these are the honors that are pretty cool, that we do pretty well on, on our competition fields and pools, but we also, you know, bring a strong academic program for our athletes. And second, there's a list of 50 incredible PHS students, which is early recognition Black Scholars. So congratulations to the 50 PHS students who've been named early recognition Black Scholars by the Urban League of Rochester, and all those names are in the agenda. I think our board will probably recognize three of them. So, thank you for raising great kids, and, and we appreciate it here in Penfield. And I'll turn it over to Dr. Driffl for business updates.
Thanks, Dr. Buttonam. Good evening, board. My updates aren't as brief, so we got a few things we got to get through tonight. Four things for board approval, and then just one item for review. So first, we have two capital project change orders, so contractor amendments related to the roofing work that's been going on at Bay Trail and Scribner. So one of those was for drainage improvements, and one of those was to remove some old cement that used to hold an old air handling unit. So just getting that off of the roof while they're up there. The second ball, let me try to explain this without my blood pressure getting too high. In 2001, or 2021, we had a comptroller audit. In 2022, the comptroller released that audit, there were some recommendations in the report that required us to have a corrective action plan. So we did. Fast forward to 2023, here at the end of the year, the State Education Department has asked us to change the date on our corrective action plan in accordance with Commissioner's regulations that indicate that the corrective action plan needs to be after the comptroller releases their report, which of course runs contrary to the fact that the comptroller requires us to respond to the report before it's released. So after much phone conversation with the fine folks at the State Education Department, they acknowledged that this is a, you know, a conflict between two different agencies in the state, and they have to work on it. But in order to move forward, they did ask us to formalize this somehow. I pointed out that the last six audits that were released on the website were all the same. They said they're going through, they're notifying schools of this. So there's no changes to the corrective action plan, all of it's actually been implemented to this point. It's just the need to have the board update the date on that corrective action plan. We have to approve our annual reserve plan, so we'll talk about that a little bit more. And then, by law, the Board of Education needs to be furnished with the levy collection report. So we're into December, the levy collection is over, the full tax spreadsheet's available in your packet. We collected 98% of the levy this fall, which is a little bit higher than average, we're usually kind of around 96%, but that last 2% will now get turned over to the towns and county to be re-levered in the spring. And then we will review further our 2024 and 25 budget goals, guidelines, and factors. So the first thing I want to talk about, it's, the full report is in your, your packet tonight. It's publicly available on Board Docs if any, you know, community members are interested in taking a look at it. This is a newer requirement from the state. I think we're in the fourth or fifth year where we've had to have this report. It came about because a lot of school districts were getting criticized by the comptroller for not having more thoughtful reserve plans and more intentionality around those reserve funds. So what the report does is go through all the different reserves that we have, the legal basis for them, what our plans are for them, the balances for the past five years, and then kind of management analysis of each. So I'm not going to walk through the entire report tonight, it's lengthy, and like I said, it's available in your packet. But I did just want to highlight reserve balances for year-end 2022, 23, so this was June 30th. So there's no changes relative to the audit report that we received back in October. We ended the '23 school year around $30 million in reserve funds. That was down from the '21 year because we utilized money for the capital project, but in the last two years, we've been able to put a few more dollars in those reserves as we build those back up. Here are all of the reserves that we currently have authorized and the corresponding balances. Again, we talk in detail about all of these and the strategies behind them, but the one that I want to point out, or two that I want to point out, the TRS retirement contribution, that's the one that was authorized by the state four years ago, and we're only allowed to fund that for five years. So this upcoming June 30th will be, on the last time we're able to put more funds into that, and then it will be technically full. And the 2017 capital reserve for bus purchases is full. So that was a 10-year authorization, but we can't put any more money into it. So come this May's vote, we're going to need the community to authorize a new capital reserve for, for bus purchases. So we're also going to be continuing our bus replacement plan come May, so we'll have four ballot propositions come May. We'll have the general fund election, we'll have bus purchases, we'll have the establishment of a new capital reserve for buses, and then the board election. So again, just a little over $30 million. For a district of our size, that's a pretty good place to be. I know I've said it before, but there's no recommendations from the state about how much money you should have. It's considered a local decision by the Board of Education, but typically, if you see somewhere between 20, 30%, that's considered about average. So that's kind of really where this puts us. So again, that reserve plan does require board approval tonight, so if you have any further questions on that, I'd be happy to answer them. I wanted to jump into the '24, '25 budget goals. So it always seems a little bit abstract to be talking about '24, '25 when we're still in '23, but sure enough, it'll be '24 here in a couple weeks. So this is kind of the first conversation around budget development before we get really into the numbers come spring. So, this document isn't radically changed from prior years. Most of the goals are still the same. We still have alignment with the Board of Education's goals around academic achievement, partnerships within the community, and fiscal responsibility. We, of course, are going to have all of our legal compliance, so federal, state, local, board laws, regulations. We always incorporate long-range thinking. Sometimes it can be tempting to just think about the next six months, 12 months, 18 months, but we're always thinking about the sustainability of programs, and if, you know, we do implement anything new, the last thing we want is to, in two years, have to back away from something like that. So we always try to think thoughtfully and try to look at a three- to five-year window. One of the things that we added this year from the Equity Long Range Plan was an explicit call-out in the collective commitments in that document to ensure that we're looking at an equity lens in all of our resource allocation, including dollars. And then, in the last couple years, we've made big investments in our technology infrastructure. So our one-to-one program, our cybersecurity, all of the instructional programs that we have there, and we want to maintain that investment. Then we move over to the guidelines. This is a little bit more of the how of the budget process. So we'll talk about enrollment here in a moment, but one of the things we're always taking a look at is student-to-adult ratios to ensure across the K-12 spectrum that they're appropriate, and that we're going to maintain staffing wherever appropriate, wherever we can. We have continued commitment to professional learning investments for our faculty. We've moved in the last couple years to a student-based budgeting methodology for materials and supplies, textbooks, software, hardware, and library resources, so that's based on individual school populations, as opposed to just kind of like a linear 2% per building per year, again, sort of with equity in mind. In the last couple years, we've really focused on BOSEs partnerships to leverage that BOSEs aid where available, so that's something we're always taking a look at. Operations, so our food service, transportation, facilities group will always continue to balance efficiencies with service. And then, as is typical, extra budget requests, new programs, new initiatives are evaluated by the senior cabinet team before being incorporated into the budget. So, as I mentioned, the most important thing, obviously, for the budget development process is trying to project out enrollment. So this is the last 10 years or so in red. The current year, '23, '24, on Beds Day, so that's the first Wednesday in October, put us at 4,614 students. Our projection for this school year was 4,615. So, maybe, in the history of my career, I don't want to jinx myself, but I'm not going to, probably get much closer than that. We were just one, one kiddo off, and actually, since then, I think we've added another seven or eight in the last two months. So it's a little bit closer to where we were last year at that 4,630 number. So the thing here, two trends I want you to be aware of, we've fully recouped all the students that had decided to seek other programming in the COVID year. 2021, we're back to where we were in 2019, 2020. And then you can see kind of the projection for the next couple of years actually is trending up a little bit. So this is, as I've mentioned, the last couple years, atypical for the region. Most schools are seeing declining enrollment. We're not necessarily seeing greater birth rates in the county. In fact, this year, in the enrollment report that I gave you tonight, is the lowest Monroe County birth rate since we were tracking that information for six or seven decades or something like that. But what we are finding is that as a percentage of county births, Penfield's enrollment is higher. So they might not be being born here in Penfield, Central School District, but by the time they start kindergarten or even pre-K now, they, they seem to be moving here. We also have a lot of development in the community happening, which is, for some school districts that are more landlocked in the region, they're just not seeing that. So that's positive. That's, that's a great thing for us. Next year, and it's in detail in the report, we are seeing kind of like a bubble cohort for a kindergarten. The 2018 year had a high birth rate, kind of like a little bubble, so we're expecting a little bit of a bump in our kindergarten enrollment. But in general, we kind of are in that 4,700 range over the next five years. So, we take a look at this annually. It's not gospel, it's just a forecast, it's just a model, but it's proven accurate over the years. So that's, that's where we start with the budget process. Another huge factor for our budget, our health insurance premiums. So aside from salaries, health insurance premiums are our biggest cost. So if you don't know, we participate in a regional consortium, it's called the Rochester Area School Health Plan, RASH-P. I always love that a health plan has RASH as the acronym. That's my sense of humor. The rates for next calendar year, 2024, are increasing 7.5%. Still a lot of money, but relative to what we're seeing in other regional and national trends, it's actually less. So there's been a little bit of like a bow-whip effect in healthcare costs since the pandemic, where, you know, healthcare providers need to negotiate with insurance companies, but it's usually on a delayed basis. So you had all of these hospital networks seeing increased costs for supply chains, nursing services, things like that. So it's a little bit of a delayed effect in how it actually gets borne out in the cost. But for us, the plan is only at 7.5% next year. Still, you know, considerable increase. Still, you know, considerable increase, but, you know, some of our neighbors are seeing 10%, 11%, 12%. So relatively good place to be. Again, this year, like in 2023, there are no changes to our dental rates, so that continues to perform where we expect it, to the point where we didn't need to raise rates. And then we are going to see some significant savings in Medicare next year, so our over-65 population, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. So historically, our over-65 population, these are the folks that move onto the Medicare plans. Those are federally subsidized plans. These retirees, their healthcare wasn't managed by the RASH group, the RASH consortium. They were just put into a community-rated pool, so they didn't really get favorable rates. New entrants to the market in the last couple of years, we started to see rates coming down, new folks stepping in to these Medicare Advantage plans. You probably see commercials and billboards, things like that sometimes, about these Medicare Advantage plans. But it allowed the Board of Directors for RASH to take a look at bringing those plans, like our under-65 plans, under a governance structure and having a little bit more of a buying power by going out with an RFP. So we did do an RFP this past year, and we did award the RFP to a Medicare Advantage provider. The results were significant cost savings with better benefits. So it's really a positive thing. So we have about 400 or 500 retirees that are still eligible for health services that, you know, have served our district over the years. About 75%, 80% are moving over to the new plan. You know, the next other quarter or a fifth are staying on the old plan. I should mention that the old plan is seeing a rate increase of about 20% next year as opposed to these new plans being half the cost. But there were some folks that, you know, healthcare is an emotional decision. They didn't want to, you know, necessarily fix something that wasn't broke. So it will be something, another opportunity going into the 2025 year, whether or not we can move some more folks over. But it was a really worthwhile initiative for not just Penfield, but all the local school districts in the area. I know it's been talked about a little bit at Monroe County School Boards, but I wanted to at least acknowledge it publicly because it'll be going into effect here in the next couple of weeks. Another big cost, you know, from a macro level in our budget are the employer contribution rates to the two New York State pension systems. So the first of which is the ERS system, Employer Retirement System. So this is traditionally for our non-instructional folks, our staff. The contribution rates for next year for that group are increasing substantially. So from 13.1% of payroll to 15.2%. So that's a 16% year-over-year increase. And this is the first time in the tax cap era since 2011 that the year-over-year change is more than 200 basis points, so more than two full percentage points. And it'll be interesting because tax cap law, and we'll review our tax cap next month, actually allows exclusion so that if there's this increase more than those 200 basis points, you can actually levy for it. So that's never happened in the last, you know, 12 years, so it'll be interesting to see exactly how that works from the state level because we'd be the ones telling them how much it's going to cost. So, you know, there's no check on exactly what that would look like. So we'll talk about that much more at the end of January, but just wanted to point that out. On the teachers' retirement system side, the TRS system, a little bit more of a favorable number. So this current year contribution rate is 9.76%, and they've indicated that next year's rate will be between 9.75% or 10.25%. They don't finalize their rates typically until the first week of February or so. So I'll come back once that's actually finalized, but better news on the TRS side for sure. And then just on the other side of the budget ledger, kind of just thinking about revenue. So the November CPI report was released this morning. It was over 3 again. So come January, when the December CPI report comes out, we'll understand the 2023 calendar year CPI, Consumer Price Index, measure of inflation. It will be over 2%, so that's one of those factors in the tax cap calculation. So between that 2%, the property growth that we've seen, which is about 1% of our total assessment in the state's eyes, and then changes in pilots, our tax cap formula is going to be over 4%. Whether or not we'll actually need that remains to be seen, but it's going to be a substantial number relative to what we've seen in the past when inflation was lower and growth was lower. So again, we'll review the full tax cap in detail every calculation, you know, in six weeks or so, but just making the board aware of that. And then the other big funding mechanism from the state is education aid. So we're not expecting a shift away from the foundation aid formula. If you recall, this past year, it was the third year of the phase-in. Everybody in the state technically is now on foundation aid the way they should be. 400 or so school districts are technically overfunded, so it'll be a question to see whether or not they get more funding or funding is taken away now that they're on formula. That'll be an interesting dynamic. The state is projecting an overall budget shortfall, but they have also indicated on the education side that they don't anticipate any cuts and that they're going to fund education at an inflationary level, whatever that means. And then I do have on there, just to note, 2024 is an election year, so traditionally we see less of a fight around education funding and the advocacy there in those years. So much more to come on budget. These are just kind of the things that we know, you know, moving into the budget development season. Requests are currently out to all of our buildings. They're all formulating all their budget requests. We go through those over the holidays, so much, much more to come on those. And with that, I turn it over for any questions.
More members' questions or comments?
One quick question.
Sure.
Do you have a sense, you talked about the Penfield being a little bit of an outlier in the sense that we're growing.
Yeah.
Do you have a sense of why?
We're good.
Yeah. I think-
Like why people are moving here? I haven't realized that there were new businesses here or anything that would draw people-
Yeah, I don't know if it's, um, yeah, we've had new developments. In the past couple of years, we've had hundreds of single-family lots developed, so obviously that's different. You look at like a Brighton or a West Veronica or an East Veronica where there's just no land to develop. Yeah, maybe, like Mark said, we've become a destination district. You know, I'd like to think that. I think we'd all like to think that. I don't have that in hard data.
But if there aren't jobs, you wouldn't move here. So I guess that's what I'm getting at, is like, what?
There's available housing here.
There's available housing, but you have to have a job to pay for the house.
Sure.
We're a classic bedroom community.
Okay. So they might not, yeah.
They may not be changing jobs, or they may just be moving to a different part of the county.
Right.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking.
Okay, so it's not necessarily that they're getting a new job. They could already have a job in some other town, but they want to move to Penfield.
Especially people with new families and growing families. They might decide to move out here.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think it's the growing family thing, you know? You might have one child have your starter home, maybe in the city or someplace else, just in a smaller community or smaller home. And then if you want a larger home, that's what the developers are developing, you know, three- to four-bedroom homes, mostly four. So I would think it's the availability of that as well.
And I know, like, I have friends that are, like, starting to have children, and a lot are like, we want to move to Penfield because the school is one of our kids. Like, they're, they work in the county, but they want to be in Penfield for the schools for their kids. I've had a lot of people tell me that.
So it really is that we're good.
It is.
I can share again.
Dr. Driffl mentioned, we don't have the data point, but in terms of some of our large, the local large corporations that build hundreds of homes have really worked and continue to talk about wanting to build in Penfield. So even in areas where we border other towns, they want their homes in Penfield because they can sell them. So it's, I think, a lot there. I can speak as well as I know now a number of families in the neighborhood I'm in who their kids have grown, and so they jumped on the market and sold their house and moved to apartments or condos, you know, downsized. And those houses, you know, turned over really quickly with brand-new families or future families, young couples. So I think, you know, you put all those in, but the homes, I know, don't, as we all know, and I'm sure that's everywhere, but they're building quite a lot in the surrounding areas, still Penfield, but not necessarily in the hub, but as you drive out 441 or up on like Plank and Jackson, so. But I'll stand by the fact, like Mark said, that it's just that.
We're good.
Well, I also just want to, I'm sorry.
No, yeah.
I just wanted to also mention, it really illustrates the fact that a good school district helps all the community members, not just families, because it helps, as you talk about, people are, people want to build in our district. It helps our property values. You know, it does help us as a community beyond just being a parent.
Yeah.
And with that, I do have a kind of a question, maybe for a future discussion. You know, we did the expansion of three of the four elementary schools. Yet we still see this going up. Are we looking at, I'm not saying looking at expanding, but are we doing some more analysis on capacity?
Yeah, it's one of those things that keeps me up at night. To be clear, like, these projection increases aren't super vast, right? It's 50, 60 kids across K-12, so K-6, that might just be 50 kids, you know, and across four different buildings, that might only be a couple of kids per grade, so it's not enough to, you know, institute a new whole class or something like that. So we currently have ample spaces is, but it's definitely something that we're always considering taking a look at.
I think as we continue those conversations too, is where we don't have room for right now currently is UPK. And so, you know, that's relatively new for us. We're in our second year of offering UPK, and trying to find those spaces is tough. There are a number of districts, because of declining enrollment, they're finding ways to pull UPK into their existing buildings. But even with the additions project from a few years ago at three of our elementary schools, there's still not empty classrooms for bringing in multiple UPK classes. We're playing around with that. Well, more to come, but that's an area where schools that are seeing declining enrollment are really jumping on because they're able to continue to utilize and bring from community partners into the school setting.
As you mentioned, this growing doesn't even take into account any UPK headcount.
Correct. This is just K-12.
I have a question. Have you seen with enrollment, kind of us getting back those students who had left, have you noticed any buildings where there are more students that have just come in, where maybe their class sizes might increase a little bit?
Harris Hills rebounded a little bit. It's still the lowest population amongst the four schools, but it's not as low as it was. You can kind of tease out from the enrollment report that I gave, like, the homeschool numbers are down a little bit. So some kids just homeschooled during the pandemic, some went into a non-public setting, like a private school. Those numbers have kind of come back down a little bit to a more historic level. So to answer your question, they're all pretty similar. It's got Harris Hills up a little bit.
Okay. Thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right.
That concludes superintendent reports.
Okay, we are on public comments. So we have We have Mr. Robert Reed. Would you like to come up? So if you could just state your name?
Yeah, could I sit down?
Yes, you can sit down. Yes, please do.
I'll sit on the podium.
Please do.
All people feel a little bit naked, you know, something's wrong. I'm Bob Reed, 275 Parkview Drive, out there on the far western frontier of Penfield, facing Brighton. I'm here to talk about the possible sale of the property on Atlantic Avenue, but I realize I'd never spoken to the Board of Education before, and all four of our kids were in Penfield. One graduated from the Creekside School at BOSI's. The other three went on to get undergraduate degrees and graduate degrees, and we're very grateful for the role that Penfield played in their educational lives. And so thank you all for the time. You weren't here when that was happening, but you're the custodians, you're the stewards, you are the caretakers of the system that helped our kids a great deal. So the Atlantic Avenue property, a green jewel sitting out there. I don't know how long the district has owned it, but I would hope that you would not be in a hurry to divest the town of this property and the people of the town and the future of the town of this property. Not so long ago, we saw a large, maybe eight- or nine-acre parcel on Creek Street acquired by a local developer, mature forest and totally flattened, roots pulled out, bedrock blasted just so they could put a dozen houses in that area. And I'm not against houses, more students for the schools, but we have a lot of developable land in Penfield that's open, and it just seems, at this stage of our raising consciousness about the environment, to lose a mature forested area to development, I think is a tragedy, especially when there is land for development, that we have land for development. I could imagine Penfield High School biology students engaged in projects in that property that a Butts Hip Brook Preserve and is quite near the Thousand Acre Swamp. I imagine that it's useful for purifying the air and supporting plants and animal species. I'm a bit of a tree hugger, I'm sorry, but I hope you really give due consideration before you let that go in a hurry. This is Christmas time. People's attention is scattered. I'm not sure how many people even know that this could happen very soon. And once it's lost, you can't get it back. So I would urge you to take your time. I know you'll do due diligence. It could be a short-term gain in money for the district, but what's the long term in losing an environmentally sensitive piece of land? So that's it. If I have maybe a tiny bit of my three minutes left, I want to comment on how important the foreign travel was for my kids at Penfield High School. In the language department, my girls went to Spain and France. And in the senior year, and my son went to Germany, he was in, there was something called the Penfield Passau Exchange at that time. I don't think it exists anymore. Students from Passau, Germany came, my time's up, huh? Trap door's going to open. Anyway, they benefited enormously from foreign travel. They came back different kids, and it charged them for the future and helped them identify things that they wanted to do. Anyway, again, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Okay, we are on the PHS Course Description Guide 6A. Can I please have a motion in a second that the 2024-25 Penfield High School Course Description Guide be approved as presented on November 28, 2023?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Can I have a motion in a second that the change orders as described above in the packet be approved?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Can I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education approve the 2023-24 property tax collection status, including all additions and cancellations made to the original approved levy amount?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Can I have a motion in second that the Board of Education approves the annual reserve plan and the presented recommendation and directs that the recommendations for reserve, oh, excuse me, for reserve use be incorporated into the 2024-25 budget planning process?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Can I have a motion in a second that the Board reapproved the corrective action plan for the 2022 State Comptroller Report?
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed? Can I have a motion in a second that the Board recertify the Medicaid compliance plan as presented?
So moved.
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? All in favor and none opposed? Um, policies for second read, can I have a motion and a second that the Board of Education approves the policies as presented, um, which is corporal punishment and the use of timeout and physical restraints that we talked about, um, was it?
Two weeks ago.
Last, yeah, last meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Questions or comments? Okay, all those in favor? All in favor and none opposed? And then Monroe County School Board Association Committee meetings, legislative, Nicole?
Yes. Um, this meeting was mostly to talk about, um, a Zoom with legislators that happened yesterday, but it was to plan for that Zoom, so, um, you know, just to really agree on how they were going to use the time that they had with the legislators. So, that, that was interesting, um, but I, something that they also talked about, tacked on at the end, was, um, certain position papers that Monroe County has on different issues, and I found some of those papers, um, pretty interesting. One was about, um, appealing for, making the case for free school, school lunches, that, you know, we've talked about before, but just, um, talking about how student achievement is higher when, when lunches are provided for free, and also, as we know from our district, that school meal debt has increased across the board, so, um, you know, it's just interesting that this keeps, sort of like the buses, this keeps coming up, and it'll, and it'll be interesting to know how it lands. Um, and then another position paper that they talked about was, um, minimum wage increasing to fifteen dollars an hour on January 1st, and how, um, how schools, Dan, you could correct me if I'm getting this wrong, but, um, how schools need to, um, raise funds to deal with that wage increase for, is that true, we're dealing with that here?
Yeah. Um, we made the move a year ago, but everybody had fifteen, so we're a little bit ahead of the curve, but, yeah, no question, it's, um, particularly on a percentage basis, if it's moving from fourteen dollars and twenty cents to fifteen dollars, it's eighty percent, or not eighty percent, but it's a significant raise, increase, um, for some districts.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, so how to meet that, um, extra expense. And then, and then the last position paper I found interesting was, um, about the, the teacher shortage, and they talked about different reasons why that is the case, and things like, um, increased certification requirements, um, constraints on competitive salaries, um, uh, and also years of negative messaging about public schools. Um, and so, people don't want to go into education when there's all this negative messaging, and, um, some possible, uh, ways to mitigate those things, um, one is, uh, loan forgive, uh, student loan forgiveness program, um, it's hard to say yes to, uh, the wages when you're going to be graduating with big debt, that's like a double whammy, so if you could get rid of at least one of those, uh, uh, loan forgiveness program, um, another one was allowing real-world experiences to be applied towards the certification process, um, so if, maybe if you started in an, this is your second career, some of that first career experience could be, um, applied, um, and, um, incentives to enter the field like higher wages, and, and, like higher wages and also the opposite of the negative messaging, but, um, sort of a return to, I, I'm not sure if it's a return to it, because I'm not sure if our country has ever been great at it, but just a perception that teaching is a noble and highly skilled profession. Perhaps we were better at it in the past, but I don't think that's ever been a strong suit. Um, so, yeah, I thought those were interesting.
So, I, I'm, you know, I know in the past, when I was on legislative, we talked about it, and I don't know if it's in the current, um, white paper, but the other, other avenue is trying to streamline the, uh, teachers coming from out of state and getting them certified.
Yeah.
Because there's a lot of states that aren't real friendly to their teachers, and if we could make it more welcoming for them to come, that could solve, uh, you know, that could help with that shortage problem, but it, the, the state, um, certification process for out-of-state is pretty onerous, and, and you guys could speak to it more specifically, but, you know, that's not helping any.
Mm-hmm. Nicole, I'm just wondering, was anything mentioned about Tier Six? I know there's a lot of...
So I was gonna...
Yesterday, find me what that is, because maybe. So, go ahead.
Go ahead.
No, all you.
So, it came up yesterday, sort of transitioning, um, in both, I went to both advocacy Zooms yesterday, uh, the nine and three, and in both, um, when we talk about teachers, um, they really hit with what maybe our legislators have some control over, which is the tier. And so, when you join, and when you work for a public organization, whether it be the, working in Albany, working for the county, working for our schools, regardless of, of what you're, you're in, whether you're a teacher, administrator, teaching assistant, clerical, you're, you're in a tier, which is really like your retirement tier, and, um, we're now up to Tier Six, and so what that means is, new people coming in pay, that, they will pay for their entire career into the teacher retirement system. We're Tier Three and Four, paid for the first ten years, um, a straight percentage, and then don't pay into the retirement system anymore. The district continues to pay in for, for you. Um, and so, that was one of those big pieces, like Tier Six is making it harder and harder. So, it used to be at least the belief that we know that, as a teacher, uh, starting, uh, twenty-five years ago, I, I knew my salary was going to be lower, but then the benefits along the way, you know, in terms of healthcare, insurance benefits, a retirement piece, but Tier Six also pushes retirement age further past, I think it's sixty-two.
Sixty-three.
Sixty-three. So, like, those pieces of being able to retire at fifty-five, and then Tier Six is sixty-three, it starts to really feel like, I think, some of the, the negative pieces around young people wanting to go into teaching, it still is a noble profession, it still is one of those, um, a lot of unsung heroes in terms of the work you do that you don't see every day. Social media, media, news, all sometimes makes it, looks like a, a negative thing when we have incredible people in our classrooms, uh, working every single day, but the tier piece is, we're at Tier Six, what is Tier Seven going to look like? What's Tier Eight going to look like? Because ultimately, our, our educators are, um, are required in New York State to have a master's degree, so we're talking about at least six years of, of post-high school education, not including all of the CTLE hours they have to have to maintain their certifications. It's a lot, um, and that's where, um, we really pushed through advocacy around, around trying to look at those tiers and what we can do to, to support. I mean, Tier One, there's, there's not many of them left, um, probably working, but that was, when you retire, your, your pension was one hundred percent of your final average salary, and they paid much less in, and that was, you know, that was years ago, but, um, Tier Six has really turned a lot of people off from education that I know of, because they look at how much they're paying in and what the retirement age is going to be, and, um, it's different than someone teaching across the hallway who might have started five years before them who was in Tier Four. Um, so that's what's, because Tier Five and Six came pretty, pretty quick, back-to-back.
So, you're paying into it for, if you, if you're working for twenty-five years, you're paying into it for the full twenty-five years?
Yep. And then it increases, how much you pay, it increases with your salary. So, it's not a straight...
And the amount of your pension is significantly less.
Oh, it's not, it's not even a hundred percent anymore.
Oh, no.
Sorry.
That was only Tier One.
Tier Four, Tier Four, that was only Tier One, Tier Four is, uh, sixty percent of a calculation they do of your final average years.
Tier Six, I think, is twenty-three percent, maybe?
Yep.
So, I know, like, I have colleagues that are, you know, thirty, and they're like, yeah, we're not doing this past forty, so like, that's my fear as an educator, is, these people aren't, we're going to lose ten to fifteen years of really strong teachers, because I know, like, I'm way better now after twenty-three years than I was twenty years ago, and we're going to lose that experience, we're going to lose those mentors, and then we're really going to be in a crisis, that's my biggest fear.
And that's unique to education, right? Like, I'm thinking of, um, a public defender that I know who, who said that he'll get a hundred percent of his highest salary, and I think it's the same thing with police departments, and, so, in terms of other state employees.
I know the tier system is...
Police is different, yeah, but the ERS system, like I talked about before, so that'd be like our facilities, folks, um, other public officials that work for villages, counties, municipalities, they're on Tier Six as well, so it's a very similar structure to TRS, which is a similar problem, because, like Dr. Putnam mentioned, it used to be a great recruiting tool, um, and now, younger folks are seeing it as less of a benefit.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. That was one, so to piggyback on that, I'm, I'm, thank you to, to Kristen who brought that up, too, is, I had written that down, is that piece in terms of when we look at the, the public image of schools and starting salaries, our, our legislators can, can champion things, but they can't, they don't have any power necessarily over that. Um, but they do when it comes to the, the tier system and where we're going with it. It is, I, I, you know, I'm sure we all, educators know of folks who, who have, I know many who have education degrees, and once they saw the Tier Six come into play, that, that it wasn't worth it anymore, and that's very, very concerning.
Mm-hmm. So, that's just changing legislation to change that?
Yeah, I think it would be a tough one, like everything in government, because it would be, what do you do, same with minimum wage, so it's one thing to say we're moving to fifteen, but what about the people who are making fifteen, fifty? Like, we've got to do, we've got to make sure if we're doing it fair, is looking at everybody, so, um, that compression isn't there. Same with, what do you do with the people who are on Tier Five and Tier Six? You're go, are you going back in to say, we're, we're changing that completely, and we're going to make all the Tier Sixes Tier Fours, then it's, how much did I pay in? My percentage is different than what I would have been Tier Four? These are above my pay grade for a statewide system on how to, on how to fix that, but, um, that was a lot of the conversation. And, and again, that, that retirement age, which, again, is one of those perks, I know it's probably, um, you know, I, I didn't come from a family of, of educators, um, and so, um, it's a difficult conversation, but, you know, there is, that's the reality, is it, it is a, for the amount of education you need to be an educator, it is typically a lower pay than the private sector. But the public sector means that during recession times, you're typically safe, during the insurance piece, you know, in terms of what a private sector pays for their insurance versus a public school employee, you know, there's those perks that are there, and you don't see them up front, but they really are to attract great teachers and keep great teachers, but as those tiers change and say, all of a sudden, it's not fifty-five, it's sixty-three, it's not fifty to sixty percent for your pension, but it's twenty percent for your pension, all of a sudden, those long-term, you start thinking, maybe at twenty-two, it's fine, because you're not thinking when you're twenty-two about being sixty-three, um, but, when it starts to, to sort of sink in, it, it's a concern.
Yeah. I have a question. How often are the tiers, uh, changed, and like, how do they move up, and who determines that? Is it like every few years, like?
There's no, like, Tier Three, Four was around, like, they always put Tier Three and Four together because they're, I think, because they're so similar.
So similar.
Like, Five and Six, yeah.
And they were there for a long time, and then Five and Six came, so there's no, like, timeline, I looked at Dan, he'll hit me if I'm wrong, but like, there's no timeline of when they change that, it, it is done in Albany, though.
When they want to?
What's that?
When they want to?
Yes.
And who's "they"?
Other state workers who don't have tiers.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's exactly right.
A lot of it is...
Where, where does the money come from? So, you know?
Yep.
Who's paying it, and where does it come from?
And, uh, I, you know, I can speak for the Tier Five, uh, really was led by, um, former Governor Cuomo, around pensions and what his salary was and what his pension, like, there was a piece there, and same with our APPR evaluation system, which he, uh, tied to test scores, so there are some things there that, so the governor had a lot of pull at, at that time, so it really is Albany that makes those decisions, and I'm sure they are watching, but I'll say that many times Albany will make decisions that they refer to as budget neutral for them, but it has an impact on local communities, and, um, again, that tier piece probably made a lot of sense if you aren't talking to the employees who are in those tiers and what it means to education, and we didn't see that immediately with Tier Six or Tier Five, we didn't see immediately teachers, you know, individuals saying, I'm not teaching anymore, but as they get into it, and especially as you talk about working across the hall from somebody in Tier Four, um, and, and you're looking at your potential future in a career, um, it's easier to step away, when, that's why about five years is when, across the state and, and nation, that five years is where we start to lose a lot of teachers, people who leave the profession of teaching, and that's not just Penfield or, or New York, that's a, a national, uh, trend.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
They also talked about, um, like, CTE?
Yeah.
Teachers and, and finding teachers, and across the state, in different areas, some of the starting salaries for CTE is like forty thousand dollars, so, finding a way to...
Those are a lot of our Bosse's.
Get and keep teachers, yeah.
Our Bosse's career technical education, I think their, the aid is capped at thirty thousand, I want to say, in terms of trying to, to try to bring that up, and I know, um, Nicole mentioned the legislative talking about utilizing your, sort of, real-world experience towards your teaching degree, and, and we've continued to advocate, especially around our career technical education, you know, our teachers teaching welding to our students at EMCC, like, yes, having that teaching degree is great, but like, if you're like a twenty-year welder, that, you know, how do we fast-track you to get you into those, um, those careers?
Add a competitive...
Add a competitive...
Pay.
Pay, yeah. Yep.
It's crazy.
I, I would just add, the, the advocacy was really interesting, and, because the nine AM had more of the legislators that we typically see around here, but because we're such a large group with Monroe County School Boards, and like, you think about, like, HFL, um, you know, you get in and out, um, further in, uh, west, um, of us, um, you get some more reps who also have a lot of rural communities, and so it was very interesting, um, everything around electric buses, we have talked about as a board, as a community, we've heard from community members, but like, in the morning session, it was legislators saying like, yeah, the timeline we got to work on, but this is good, this is great, and then the afternoon, it was like, this isn't going to work because of the, uh, far north country and the large districts, and, so it was just interesting that legislators, you know, who are all working, you know, for a common goal, have very different views of things. Um, the foundation aid came up, as Dr. Driffl did a nice job referencing, is that foundation aid has been talked about as that formula being, um, around for a long time, and, uh, some districts feel like if you redid the foundation aid from scratch, that they should be getting more money from the state, but then, does that mean another district gets less money from the state? And like, how does that work? How can you, how can you shift foundation aid and do it in a, in a fair, equitable manner? School lunches came up, they did, a number of legislators did, um, sort of, um, tap themselves for, um, the changes, that there are schools that are able to now provide free and reduced lunch, because they lowered the, um, threshold for, for free and reduced. Penfield is not impacted by that, but then in some districts, it's like, one school has free and reduced lunch and another school doesn't, so they're just talking about the inequity still. They're still, that is a large advocacy area that every legislator talked about, um, supporting. Um, and then the, uh, the tax cap, which, I think I'm in my tenth year, and so I look at Mark and Catherine, you know, and when, when the tax cap came into play, and, um, we've advocated, but the legislators made it really clear, like, the tax cap is popular across the state and it's not going away, but I don't think Monroe County School Boards Association or anybody who was on it is asking to like, just throw the tax cap out, but making sure that we look at it to say, what can be put in under the cap? What can be, how do we, how's the formula work? Making sure that, that, um, districts, um, are able to, to remain funded, because that concern is, if there's not funding, then the potential piece is staff, you know, seventy-five percent is, is staff when we look at our, our budgets, and, um, you know, that impact, um, on a greater community, because our teachers and educators live within the community and, and their paychecks go back into the community, so it has that sort of, um, long-reaching impact. But I, I think the advocacy, um, and Emily was on with me in the afternoon, I, I thought it was, uh, informative, insightful, they definitely listened, the legislators have been, have been briefed, it was, I didn't think there was anybody from the many that were on that, you know, weren't able to talk through and hear and understand, um, which I appreciate.
Facilities Committee?
So...
No.
All right.
You're, you're prepared, and I'm not, so why don't you take it?
It's such a relative thing, okay?
It was...
Which was a relative thing, okay.
It was a good meeting, how's that?
It was a very good meeting.
It was a good meeting.
It was a good meeting. So this, so Catherine and I attended the Facilities Committee meeting where we really received a pretty good update on the state of the buildings and grounds and transportation center construction, as well as the upcoming phases, which include things like the commons, is it Harris Hill, I think, is the vestibule there? And then the library here and a few other things. So, you know, the, things are going well, as, you know, some things are more expensive than we anticipated, some are less. And, you know, Dr. Driffl and the, and our architects and our, you know, the people managing the project, they, they worked through this and they work, look at, and trying to adjust all these things to make sure that we stay on budget. I think one of the things that did come up, which ties into what Dr. Putnam was talking about, were some of the setbacks, and one of them was buses, right? So one of the issues we have that's acting as a delay is part of our plan for the bus garage is electric buses. In the long run, how many buses are we going to have? A lot. And what kind of electricity demand is that? Well, RG&E today can't meet that demand. Now, that's not our demand for today, that's our demand in the future when we're fully converted. But because of that, they're not, because they don't have a, I'm going to say they don't have a plan, but they are not comfortable that they have, with this, they're causing a delay in some of us, in allowing us to run conduit to run electricity for the building just for construction. Is that correct?
I think you've, you're on it. And I would just tell you that, that after Facilities Committee, and then I waited until advocacy, so I have reached out to a couple, but I'll give a shout out to our Assembly member Jen Lunsford, who, it was yesterday that I was in contact with her office and then today received a phone call directly from RG&E saying, we need to, we need to get with you to make this happen. So we have, you know, and I, I know enough about RG&E power that we need over there to be dangerous, you know, like, so I'm not the one to really start talking about where we're doing stuff and where to put the lines. So our MNE Engineering, who we work with, is, is reaching out to that contact at RG&E. So hopefully within the next few days, week or so, we've, we'll have some, you know, good news. And it really just falls in that we need really permanent service, like where to put the box in for us to have, to have that electricity to keep building. Right now, we can keep kind of working with temporary power because we're outside. Once the building goes up and they've got to be inside, you're going to need the electricity. And so it really has to do with like the substation, they're going to need to upgrade their substation in order to provide power, not just for us, but also the large building on 250 in Atlantic, the townhomes and everything, which as a reminder, is in the Webster School District, so town of Penfield Webster Schools. But, you know, so all of those pieces. And so it's just with many bureaucratic red tape pieces, it was sort of, we're not getting the answers. And we've been waiting for about eight months working with RG&E and they've got to follow their very specific process and, but it's a, a kudos, I believe, for, for Jen Lunsford for that support. And Mark, you're right, we only have two electric buses now. We don't need that facility to be up and running for 100 electric buses, but we do need the, the electricity. And now I look at Dan and say, did Mark and I do an okay job explaining that?
Yeah. And I think, I'm going to just segue a little bit, you know, the state, you know, Governor Hochul and Jen and all, all of those folks, you know, they have a very, an aspiration that I agree with, you know, trying to convert to electric buses. You know, then there's the reality of implementation, which is never simple or straightforward. And honestly, they don't have the details. We, part of what we try to do and others try to do is educate them on the details. In the reality, the details come along later and they're not, we're not even aware of the details. So this is a learning curve. We're kind of at the front end of this whole, let's put electric buses in because we're building the building. And, you know, it, and things like the North Country and other rural areas. So, you know, you can have the aspiration of saying, let's go to electric. And just because you have problems doesn't mean it's a bad idea. It means that there's just more things to work through and we'll get there. I think that's when you have to really take a good, honest look at the timeline.
Right.
But you still have to say, is this, is this a worthwhile goal? And not let the problem stop the goal, stop the success. You just have to work through the problems and understand it won't go smoothly, especially for the people who are at the front of it. You know, if another school district 10 years later builds a bus garage, they won't have a problem. But we're at the front. And that's just the way it is. It's not good or bad. But it-
The nuances though, of making one big sweeping requirement for an entire state that's so diverse, where you have, you know, cities that bustle and then you have the North Country and then you have, what we've learned through this is how, you know, the draining of the battery for cold weather and longer hauls and things like that. So when you, when you have the good intention and then you make the legislation, and it's like, great, we did this, look at this accomplishment. And then all the problems start popping up, right? But I got to say, for Jen Lunsford, you know, she's an amazing advocate. And I feel confident with that kind of advocacy. That as things come up, you know, we have that, again, that relationship with our, another one of our partners, you know? So, but yeah, those big picture moments, if only, you know, if only we could see more clearly when we make these, you know, the demand of, you know, a timeline, a deadline with a good idea and then all of these different things that come up.
You know, that's New York State. I mean, the reality is-
Or is it everywhere?
This has been the way it's, this has happened long before buses-
Right.
With other things they've done. They've had good intentions, the implementation kind of lacks the detail that we have to figure out as we go, and it will continue to happen. And we just have to understand that's the way the state works.
My thinking around this was, when I want my children to do something, I have to say, I want it done now. Because if I say, just make sure you clean your room by next weekend, it's not going to get done. So like that, that's my positive thinking here, which is the state gives us a deadline, knowing that maybe that deadline's going to get extended. But if we don't have a deadline, then it'll, people typically will wait. Like, so if it's in 10 years, they'll be like, well, let's wait, let's wait eight years and then we'll start working on it. And then we'll say, well, we only have two years to do it. So we're slow, but I, I really do, again, I think it says a lot about the district and the board leadership around the fact that we're not diving in 100%. We've got, thanks to the grant that Jen Lunsford was able to secure for Penfield, we have two electric buses, we're, you know, working on those, we're seeing how it goes, we're learning. And then just so happens, we're building a bus facility, which was planned before the deadline of electric buses, but we're able to shift a bit to at least have that conduit ready to expand when necessary. Because if you, I'm glad it kind of worked out, because if we didn't have any of that conduit and systems ready to go, then we're talking about tearing up asphalt to lay electric lines. We'll have it in, but similar on a much smaller scale to the football lacrosse field we have, our turf field, we built it with a stadium and put conduit in for lights, but the first time, there was no lights. And then after a few years, the, the demand and request from the community was, we want lights on the field. And because we had thought, forward-thinking and had the conduit all ready for the lights, we didn't have to tear up the whole field to put lights in. So, you know, that's, that's where we are, but that's it. So I'm going to go home and tell my kids to clean their room tonight.
Let me know how that works.
But are they in a rural setting or are they more? Okay, never mind.
Love it or both.
Yeah, right.
All right.
Can I ask just a quick question, only because Harris Hill had reached out and was just curious about their vestibule? Are we good on our timeline? Still a go for the summer? Okay.
And that was one of the, we did talk a little bit at Facilities Committee is, of course, you know, could we start early? Like, could we start in the spring? And the hard part is, because it's that vestibule, the, the whole thing would be offline. And so if we wanted to be secure, having a huge hole in our entrance probably isn't the best thing to do when school's in session. So summertime, we're, we're going to be in a, in a good spot.
Perfect. Thank you.
Yep. On that same token, I'll just mention with Indian Landing, we know we've talked about here the classrooms that weren't up and ready, there's some unforeseen situations. We've been, we've met with the George English and our folks from campus and SEI Architecture, met with the teachers who had the new classrooms and the delay and the impact. And I have, I wasn't able to make that meeting, I was double booked, but I have been going through the notes from that meeting, some great points in terms of what we can learn to, for this summer, we've got more rooms to, to get done. And so that feedback was great. And then SEI Architect, Campus Construction, George English, Marcy Ware, I was able to get there for about half of it. They went to each room for the teachers whose classrooms will be impacted this year to kind of go through and what are the small changes we can make to make sure that we're creating the spaces that are best for our students and our teachers. So we're hoping for a much smoother summer, this summer with the construction at Indian
Okay. Any unfinished business? Any new business? Okay. Can I have a motion in a second that the meeting be adjourned at 7:51 PM?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? All in favor, none opposed?